As Mayor, I call this electronic communications meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being convened with city council members using the Zoom platform, broadcast over the city's cable channel, and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. Now, I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting. Ms. Simmons?
Mayor Doll?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Here.
Ms. Oaks?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Dr. Harrington?
Here.
Ms. Mead?
Here.
Dr. Curran?
Here.
I've confirmed that all council members are present.
Thank you. I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg now identify his location and those city officials or colleagues, if any, present with him at that location, and the participation of anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, I am participating from my residence in Stanton. There is no one with me at this location. Also participating this evening on the Zoom platform are Faith Simmons, clerk of council, Leslie Beauregard, Assistant City Manager, Doug Gwynne, City Attorney, and Phil Traer, Chief Finance Officer. And we will also be joined during the work session by Anna Levitt with CAPSAW and Jenny Newman with the Office on Youth. And finally, we'll be joined, I believe, by representatives of Augusta Health during the regular meeting to accept a proclamation.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that notice, reasonable under the circumstances of the electronic communications nature of this meeting, has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of city council. This meeting has also been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page. Access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During this work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Public comment will be received during council's regular meeting, which will begin at 7:30 PM. Instructions for public comment can be found on Agenda for the Regular Meeting and on Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the many meeting minutes that this meeting is being conducted by Zoom, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which as part of the total circumstances makes it impracticable or unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with City Council Ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v.a.us/cogord2020-04. Given that we are conducting this meeting by Zoom, with the meeting being livestreamed on the city's website and broadcast over the cable system as it occurs, I believe it merits reminder of a few special requests as we undertake this meeting in this unique format. First, I emphasize the request that each speaker speak loudly and slowly and self-identify each and every time when speaking, so that it will be clear who is speaking before your remarks are made. Second, please pause after each speaker to allow a brief interval between that speaker and another speaker. Third, if for any reason a participant cannot clearly hear the speaker or must leave the meeting before it is adjourned, please let us know. Fourth, all votes will be taken by roll call and recorded in the minutes. Fifth, I ask that if any member of city council has to leave the meeting for any period of time, to please interject and make an announcement so that the clerk may make note of attendance in the minutes. I ask that you also announce your return so it also may be reflected in the meeting minutes. Finally, I ask everyone's patience, because without being in the same room, it is likely that a speaker may not realize that another speaker is continuing. Again, we may unintentionally step on each other's words, so it's fine if we need to have the speaker repeat or clarify. We'll take whatever time is necessary so that everyone is clear about what is being said and by whom. I will now take questions from council members and participants if you have any questions about the process. Are there any questions at this time about the process? All right, if not, we'll move on to the invocation moment of silence by Mr. Holmes.
I guess what I'm doing today is more of a statement than a prayer, I guess, and maybe it's a little of both, but, you know, this Friday, we're going to start opening back up Virginia Phase One for business. And, you know, as much as I'd like to get back open and have customers back inside my building, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not rushing to open back up without taking all the precautions that are necessary. I just hope that, you know, that as a city, we can do this as seamlessly as possible, because I know everybody here is concerned about everybody's health and welfare, and that's pretty much what I have to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holmes. Item one is the consideration of the work session and regular meeting agendas. You've had an opportunity to review both agendas, and I would entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor Doll? This is Brenda Mead.
Ms. Mead?
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Jim Harrington.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Mayor Doll?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two is the FY 2021 Budget Work Session. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we find ourselves at the end of a very challenging path, and hopefully, one more time, Mr. Traer can lead us in a discussion. He'll first present to you where we are this evening on the eve of your consideration of the budget, and then we'll be happy to entertain any questions that you have once he's completed his presentation.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we were here to consider a budget ordinance for FY 21. On Slide 2, we provide a summary of our revised FY 21 budget. As can be seen, our FY 21 revised budget totals $114,290,621, as compared to FY 21's original proposed budget of $122,153,000, and FY 20's adopted budget of $119,916,000 for negative variances of $7.9 and $5.6 million, respectively. On Slide 3, we have several unique features on this year's budget ordinance. The recitals A through M, which appear at the beginning of the ordinance, provides background information for citizens to review in order to gain an understanding of what occurred during the budget process, why the budget remained in the city manager's proposed state for so long, why adoption was delayed, the reason for the year-on-year reduction, and why we are not fully appropriating the FY 21 budget at this time, which leads us to Section 2. Given the uncertainty of the effects of the coronavirus shutdowns will have on the city's budget, we are asking for appropriation of 60% at this time. Our budget will remain at $114 million, but our initial appropriation request will be $68,574,373. This is the amount that we will be able to legally spend at this time. Our plan is to come back before council in late fall after the full economic impact of the virus has become clear, and council can adjust upwards or downwards the balance of the budget in accordance to the economic conditions. In Section 9 of the ordinance, we are stating that the annual salary for each council member will remain at its current level while providing an avenue to redirect a portion of your salary that is the equivalent of a 10-day furlough or 3.85% of your salary back to the City General Fund. Each member of council requested such a reduction. This avenue allows for that to happen without permanently altering the established salary schedule. On Slide 4, we have a breakdown of the budget ordinance and the corresponding appropriation we will be asking for tonight. The FY 21 budget ordinance totals $114,290,621 and consists of the following: General Fund, $56.4 million; Ed's Service Fund, $4.8 million; CIP Fund, zero; Blue Ridge Court Services, $1.1 million; Water Fund, $5 million; Sewer Fund, $4.6 million; Parking Fund, $540,000; Stormwater Fund, $1.3 million; Environmental Fund, $3.3 million; Education Fund, $32.5 million; Cafeteria Fund, $1.5 million; Textbook Fund, $276,000; School CIP, zero; School State Operator Programs, $3 million. Again, we will be asking for consideration of a 60% appropriation at this time. Appropriation amounts can be seen on the right-hand side of the slide. On Slide 5, this slide is appropriate to two slides, which summarizes the proposed tax and fees for FY 21. We'll start with real estate. Real estate tax remains unchanged at 95 cents per $100 of assessed value. Downtown service district tax remains unchanged at 15 cents per $100 of assessed value. Personal property tax remains unchanged at $2.90 per $100 of assessed value. Machining tools tax remains unchanged at $1.24 per $100 of assessed value. On Slide 6, water rates are proposed to increase by 5%. Sewer rates are proposed to remain unchanged. Refu rates are proposed to increase by 10%. Stormwater fees are proposed to remain unchanged, and parking fees are proposed to remain unchanged. On Slide 7, as part of the FY 21 budget process, the schools have elected to use upwards of $703,000 in federal CARES Act monies to mitigate the economic impact on their FY 21 budget. The CARES Act provides support to K-12 education in a variety of different ways. Stanton City School will be utilizing these funds to the fullest extent possible during FY 21. The next slide, school reductions included in the FY 21 budget includes the elimination of a proposed 2% salary increase, the elimination of six of seven new positions, the elimination of additional pre-case locks, elimination of proposed salary and stipend adjustments, and the elimination of numerous non-compensation line items. This slide should look familiar. It's actually the slide that we ended last week's session, and it's a good summary. At the present time, our FY 21 budget equals $114,290,621. We will be asking council to consider the total FY 21 budget of $114,290,000 during this evening's regular session. Our appropriation request will be 60% of the approved budget, or $68,574,373. A 60% appropriation will allow for contractual obligations, which are often paid in full at the beginning of the year, to be fully funded and allow other line items to be funded through the first six months of the fiscal year. We will come back later before council during the fall for additional appropriations, by which time we hope to have a better handle on the economic impact of our city's budget. Slide 10 is a bit of very good news. Two days ago, on May 12, 2020, the city was notified by the Commonwealth of Virginia that we are the recipient of $2.1 million in CARES grants money for costs which are necessary and occurred during the current public emergency, costs that were not accounted for in the budget as of March 27, 2020, and costs that were incurred during the period of March 1, 2020 through December 30, 2020. There are very specific uses for these funds, and staff will be working on an expenditure plan to bring before council in the coming weeks. All monies not expended by December 30, 2020 must be returned to the state of Virginia. And that's my summary at this time.
Madam Mayor and members of council, if I can just add that this presentation, as has been the case with all the other presentations made during the budget process, is available to the public on the City of Stanton website, on the budget webpage. There's a link that exists there now where the presentation can be viewed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rosenberg, and thank you, Mr. Traer. I'll go down the list now and see if anybody has questions or comments about this proposed budget. So we'll start with Vice Mayor Kyer.
I have none.
Thank you. Dr. Curran?
I have no questions.
Thanks. Ms. Mead?
Yes, I wonder if Mr. Traer could cite, I know there are probably lengthy restrictions on this funding, CARES Act funding, but some examples of the types of expenses that might be reimbursed in your very brief look at the announcement from the funders.
Absolutely, happy to, Ms. Mead. Expenses for acquisition and distribution of medical and protective supplies, including sanitizing products, personal protective equipment for medical personnel, police officers, social workers, child protection services, child welfare officers, direct service providers for older adults and individuals with disabilities in community settings. Expenses to disinfect public areas and other facilities. Expenses to facilitate distance learning, including technological improvements in connection with school closing to enable compliance with the COVID-19 precautions. Expenses to provide paid sick and family leave. Expenditures related to the provisions of the grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business interruption caused by required closures. Expenditures related to state, excuse me, expenses for food delivery to residents, including, for example, senior citizens and other vulnerable populations, to enable compliance with COVID-19. It will not, however, be able to be used to reduce the number of furlough days or potential staff openings on the city side. The school side, the school side is wide open. I'll read you some of the examples from the school side. Schools are allowed to provide principals and other school leaders with the resources necessary to address school needs, which we wide open. Again, purchasing supplies to sanitize and clean facilities. Planning for and coordinating during the long-term closures, including out-of-thefight meals and technology for online learning. And a big wide-open net here, other activities that are necessary to maintain operations and continuity of services, and continuing to employ existing staff. Truly, the CARES funds for the schools has enabled the schools to retain their existing staff structure without reduction enforced. This has been a godsend for the schools in this one clause.
Thank you. Thank you, that was very helpful.
Do you have any other questions, Ms. Mead?
No, I do not.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Oaks?
No questions.
Thank you. Dr. Harrington?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
No questions.
All right, thanks. And I would just like to comment that I have appreciated all of the work that Mr. Traer and Mr. Rosenberg and Ms. Beauregard and all of Mr. Traer's staff and all the department heads, because this has taken some real quick work to have almost a completed budget and then almost have to start over. So I appreciate all the good work that's happened there.
Amen.
Thank you.
So are any final comments on that? If not, we can move on to item 3, and that's the presentation of the Community Action Partnership of Stanton, Augusta, and Waynesboro FY 2019 Annual Report. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have with us this evening Anna Levitt, the Director of the Community Action Partnership of Stanton, Augusta, and Waynesboro, and she is ready to share with you CAPSAW's annual report.
Hi, thank you very much for this opportunity. I hope you can hear me, and I tend to speak really fast, so I'm going to try to slow it down. Give me some hand signals if I'm going too fast. As you are aware, CAPSAW funds and supports programs that provide services to low and moderate income families working towards improved self-sufficiency. Our funds come from a combination of federal, state, and local dollars, some of which are provided as matching funds by the city of Waynesboro and Augusta County. Each year, our Board of Directors reviews and selects funding recipients from a competitive application pool, and then those programs that are selected are going to provide quarterly and annual reports. They participate at site visits, and there's a lot of accountability, which encourages them, which they're already doing, but to accurately report their outcomes and to measure their impact on the communities that they serve. You should have seen a copy of our fact sheet for 2015 or 19, and I'll be glad to get some paper copies to you, and we can facilitate that process. You will also find our 2019 annual report on the website, which is hosted through the city of Waynesboro. During 2019, we funded about two dozen programs, and we funded the same programs in 2020, the year that we're currently in. So a lot of the same services were being offered. Those services are designed to develop and support self-sufficiency. Services are going to increase opportunity and improve capacity of the families that they're serving. Some of the partner agencies include Blue Ridge Court Services, Blue Ridge Legal Services, the Valley Mission, State and YMCA, Valley Supportive Housing. They're all going to be focused around education, employment supports, housing, medical and behavioral health access, and crisis intervention services. Programs are reimbursed for about $417,000 in CAPSAW funding in FY 19, and that contributed to an estimated impact of about $3 million in that fiscal year. 17,000 volunteer hours are provided by community members, and 4,000 of those are provided by service recipients themselves, or program recipients giving back to our community. 4,700 individuals were served. Nearly 800 of those were children who access childcare, preschool programs, after-school, summer programming, et cetera. And the agencies this year have already served about 4,000 people before a lot of them had to adjust their service models. In addition to that blended federal, state, and local funding pool, the board sets aside funding that is local-only dollars, and we call that our Community Support Fund. And those funds are used to support programs that meet our mission but that aren't appropriate for federal funding for a variety of reasons. It might be that their recipients are above the federal poverty line that we're allowed to serve, or they may be requesting services that are not, or items actually, that are not supported by federal regulations. And in some cases, it's just that they don't have the ability to provide the demographic data and the long-term tracking that we're required to expect. Community support grant recipients in FY 19 included Valley Current Technical Center, Ride the Pride, Project Grows, and the Talking Book Center. That fund also supported the purchase of bollards or ballards. In front of the Valley Mission, there was a car that went through the Valley Mission, and they needed some support to fund those ballards to keep another car from going through. And the city was really a big part of making that happen, and it's a good example of something that's a needed thing, but that wasn't fundable by federal dollars. In 2019, CAPSAW met all of our federal and state organizational standards. We also did that in 2020, and I want to give our board and our agencies full credit for that. Not every community action agency can say that, so we're pretty proud of that. We did have a site visit this fall, and that included a personal visit with me and with the board, and they also went to the agencies we fund, and we all passed with flying colors. Moving forward, we're going to continue to support collaborative programmings addressing barriers to success and really helping those low and moderate income residents move forward. One of our most significant partnerships is represented by the people on this call. CAPSAW was founded in 2009 by all three localities, specifically to address the local causes and conditions of poverty, and you may recall, this was directly a result of the American Reinvestment Recovery Act, the stimulus funds from the recession. And once we were established as a community action agency, we were allowed to continue to receive those funds. Because the localities took on that work then, we are now able to receive funds from the CARES Act that we can use to alleviate some of those COVID concerns as well. So we just got that confirmed this week, so we'll have about $299,000 that we can spend over the next, until September of 2022. So we'll have time to plan in the long term for that. Many of the agencies that receive CAPSAW funding have continued to provide services during this period of crisis. We worked with them to help meet, it's a constantly changing landscape, so trying to help them in whatever way that we can to meet those changing needs. We were able to use those local funds that we have to provide funding for agencies to acquire technology that they needed to work from home, or that they might need to provide off-site service provision, which is a new model for them, medical equipment like no-touch thermometers, as well as portions of the cost of reopening needs like cleaning supplies and cleaning services. We're going to work closely with the COVID response team facilitated by the Community Foundation. We want to thank you to Mayor Doll for participating in our commercial that was intended to direct area residents towards resources and emergency support, and really put out a, you know, that we're all a community working together, so thank you for that. The board is going to begin the process of really determining the best placement of those CARE Act funds moving forward, and so we'll keep you appraised of that, and we certainly hope that you will share with us your thoughts about how we can continue to strive towards our vision of a poverty-free community. So we would like your input in that planning process as we move forward. So I'm going to close with the Community Action Promise, which I think is especially meaningful at this time, but "Community Action Changes People's Lives, Embodies a Spirit of Hope, Improves Communities, and Makes America a Better Place to Live." We care about the entire community, and we are dedicated to helping people help themselves and each other. We're going to continue to do that, and we want to thank you guys on behalf of our board, of the staff, and our partner agencies, and the community members that benefit from the services that you guys support. So thank you very much, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Council members, does anyone have any questions or comments at this time? I'm scrolling through pictures to see if I see anybody's hand raised. Well, I would just like to comment that, Anna, I think the CAPSAW has been a tremendous success under your leadership, so you're not allowed to ever go anywhere else.
Well, currently, I'm stuck here, so it's all good.
Right, this stay-at-home will keep you working for CAPSAW.
Thank you.
I appreciate all of the good work and the help that has gone out through the community through this project, so it's been very successful, and thanks for giving us an update on it. And I always like your annual report, it's got data, and I, you know, I like that. All right, so our next item, four, is a presentation of Office on Youth FY 2019 Annual Report. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, Ginny Newman, the Director of the Central Shenandoah Office on Youth, is here with us this evening and is ready to share her annual report.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Doll, and everyone. Let's see if I can share a screen. If I can be successful. I think that worked.
Yeah.
New things that we've had to learn through this process. New things that we've had to learn through this process. New technology. In fiscal year 19, as you can see there, there's some brief statistics. We continue to serve over 5,000 youth, or 31% of all of the public school youth in the region received a face-to-face encounter through our office. That included 106 juveniles. This was a decrease in about 40% over the prior year. The reason for that is because we worked with the court service unit and discontinued the community service program that was being provided. That can still be ordered for youth to serve community service, but we are not a conduit in between just to collect paperwork and put in that data. It was not being successful. And due to these state regulations, the responsibility actually, responsibilities change, and it falls to the parents of the youth, and they are totally responsible for turning in their logs at this point. We'll still answer questions, of course, to any youth about their community service hours. In 2019, we were also able to upgrade our home electronic monitoring services to GPS locate, and we added the use of what's called a Smart Link app as part of our diversionary programs. This app actually does a locate, a GPS locate. It's a spatial recognition and voice recognition. So especially in these times, we cannot do some of our face-to-face contacts. We have put more youth on this service and are able to see that they are where they're supposed to be, or we get an alert that they are not where they are supposed to be. So it's a step down from the ankle bracelets, but it's an asset to what the court service unit can actually be utilizing. We also improved our truant youth program. That was a new program for us. In 2019, we served 13 chronically truant youth through a program called Check and Connect. We had staff that have been fully trained in that program. And moving into the next school year, the current school year that we're in, our caseload more than doubled. But in 2019, the 13 students that we had improved their attendance by 76.9%. So we consider that to be quite successful. We also expanded the schools that we were serving to, beyond Stanton High School, we are serving Shelburne Middle School, Waynesboro High School, Kate Collins Middle School, and in Augusta County, Wilson Riverheads and Stupert Strath High Schools. YADAP Program, Youth Alcohol and Drug Abuse Prevention. I know many of you have heard me talk about this. Last summer, we were able to sponsor three teams, each of four students and one adult, to attend this program through ABC. They spend one week at Longwood, and at the end of the week, they have a plan that they take back to the community and to their schools. And the three teams we sent really came around the issues of teen vaping. So they brought that back to their communities, and they started to do some presentations. The presentation, the most recent presentation and some short PSAs peer-to-peer should be coming up on our websites shortly, since they can no longer go out into the community and do this type of thing. Our Summer Youth Employment Program. We had 13 last summer, and of those 13 students, they were at Goodwill, Boys and Girls Club, the libraries, Rescue Squad and a couple of the schools. The 13 participants worked a total of 1,468 hours, and they made a total of $10,275 across the six weeks. Most of the youth worked 20 to 25 hours during that six-week time period. Last summer was the last summer that we could fund that program through the funding stream that we had. Moving into this year, our plan was to combine, under another funding stream, a youth employment program specific to our truant youth, so that we can keep contacts with them over the summer and give them something else to look forward to and move toward some incentives there. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, we are not able to do the program at all this summer, but we are staying in touch with all of those children. So we're maintaining a caseload of about 25 for that program during this summer. And then our Family Life Education Program, 4,900, just over 4,900 students. We taught again, all fourth through 10th grade students at both Stanton City Schools and Waynesboro City Schools, and that number does include fourth and fifth graders, ninth graders in Augusta County schools. And we began last year a family life curriculum review. This is a year-long process. We brought Waynesboro City Schools and Stanton City Schools together, and they have agreed on one curriculum. And about to, as I said, it's a year-long process. They're gonna put this before their school board, hopefully in May. We also offered 26 parenting support programs. Turn the page. That was through six different evidence-based programs. So there were 26 different program options offered. We had 266 parents participate. 41% of those parents were from two-parent homes. Most of them, another 38% were female-headed homes. The average family size was four. We had an increase in the number that we served in our Spanish-speaking communities due to some work with a program coordinator from Promotoris de Salud. And she has been working very well with us in hosting these classes. We've continued to work at Middle River Regional Jail, and we serve 34 incarcerated parents there as well. Also through the year, we had worked the year prior on a resource directory, which had been published. We had completed the needs assessment in the community. And as a result of all of that, we moved forward on our strategic planning and some other work with the community. So our strategic plan has resulted in a few things for us. One was a change in our vision and our mission. Our vision, a vision is something that you have that is your long-term. It's what you want to see as a future statement, and your mission should talk more about what you're doing here and now, and how you are doing it. So we've changed those slightly. So the mission of the Central Shenandoah Valley Office on Youth is to promote collaborative efforts with families, service agencies, to encourage positive youth development in the community. And our all-around goal is to see all youth in the community to reach the highest. That was a process that we went through, not only with our staff, but the Youth Commission worked on this as well. It took us just over a year between the resource directory and the surveys and working with some community agencies to move towards the strategic plan. And I believe you've received an overview in your packets. If you have not, I'll be happy to get it to you. The actual document is about 56 pages long. And the reason for that is, the working document itself includes all of the outcomes and outputs, all of the action steps, the evaluation criteria, who's responsible, what the finances are, what funding streams we may have for each of those. So we have a working document, but the Youth Commission agreed that something shorter needs to go out that people could pay attention to in the community. You can see on there our program, our three areas of goals. We have program goals broken down into two different goals. These include all of our current and ongoing programs, how we plan to complete the programs, the numbers we plan to serve, as I said, and who's overseeing and implementing them. We focused on some organizational goals, which address our efficiency, our fiscal responsibility, and our responsiveness to our funding partners, to the courts, to the schools and to local government, because local government is our primary funder at just over 60% of our total budget at this time between the three localities. And then our process goals. Our process goals encourage our ongoing evaluation. So this is our checks and balances for ourselves as well. It's also a reminder that we always need to be looking at community trends and youth needs, how we can respond, but that we don't need to be doing all of the programs. We need to collaborate with other youth-serving agencies and work with them on who may be best to keep some of these. And during this COVID process, there's been a whole lot more collaboration. I think we've firmed up a lot of those collaborative efforts that we already had in place, and we've been able to do some different types of outreach, and it's been very, very successful for us. So we're still out there, and we're still working, and our strategic plan, having just been put into place in January, will be that framework to help us continue. And... I don't, there we go. Stop shaking.
So council members, do you have any questions or comments? I'll have to look and see if I see any hands up. Well, Jenny, I would like to say that I know that you've had a passion for children in your whole career, so I'm happy that you're in the place you're in. And I think, I think this, the strategies and the revamping of the mission and having the goals up to date, they look really good to me, and I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. I think it's great that we're coming close to having a uniformed family education program. I think that's a good thing. And so thank you so much for this update. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you both.
Thanks, Ginny.
Okay, item five and D on the regular menu is a just, regular menu, regular agenda, is a discussion of an ordinance repealing Chapter 5.15 Health Clubs and Massage Therapy - Tattoo Parlors of Title V Business Licenses and Regulations of the Stanton City Code. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, I'm hopeful that Mr. Gwynne will present this item.
Mr. Gwynne?
This is Doug Gwynne, Madam Mayor, members of council. What you have before you is fairly straightforward, proposed ordinance that would, in effect, eliminate 40 sections of the city code. And we're always open to opportunities to do some pruning of the city code, where we either have redundant provisions or overlapping provisions, either within the code or with the Virginia Code. In this instance, as to health clubs and massage parlors, if you want to call them that, and tattoo parlors, we have what are essentially overlapping provisions, and they are unnecessary in the city code because they're regulated thoroughly by the Virginia Code and by the Virginia Administrative Code. I recommend to council that it consider adopting this ordinance, which would affect an immediate repeal of these provisions and shorten, simplify our code at least a little bit. Questions?
Council members, are there any questions?
I thought there would at least be some comment about lawyers being reluctant to eliminate any words, but I really applaud your restraint tonight.
Yeah, okay. I think it's a good thing. I think it's a good thing to eliminate any duplicative efforts. So this one, I consider this one a housekeeping kind of thing.
It is.
So council members, are any questions or comments on this? All right, this will be item D on the regular meeting agenda. All right, item six is an update concerning COVID-19 recovery planning. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I want to spend a few minutes providing you with an update concerning our efforts to address the current conditions and the path forward as the state embarks upon its reopening. Tomorrow, that phased reopening begins, as provided in Executive Order 61 issued by Governor Northam last week. I think it's worthwhile to share some of the introductory language in the executive order that informed the guidelines that were developed for Phase One. First, the executive order makes clear that the virus is still present. It also states that the path forward will not be business as usual. And then, if I may, let me quote. It says, "These measures are meant to make necessary ventures outside of your home safer, but everyone, especially those who may be more vulnerable to the virus, must understand we are all safer at home." And these principles are introductory language that are stated in the executive order are consistent with the governor's statement last Friday during his briefing on the day that he issued the executive order. And he said on that occasion, "Phase One looks like what we've been doing." So his point was that with the reopening, if you will, that there would be very modest incremental change. And what I would like to do, now it's my turn, to see whether I'm able to successfully share some materials. And I'm hopeful that you are seeing some slides.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Harrington. So these were the slides that were presented by the governor at his briefing last Friday. And I thought that it would be useful to take you through these, to give you a sense of really just how incremental that change is. So in Phase One, as I've already noted, everyone will be safer at home. No social gatherings of more than 10 individuals, continued social distancing, continued teleworking, face coverings recommended in public, and revised business limitations. And these are the revised business limitations. So when the presentation was made last week, that's the now column, and then Phase One is where we will be beginning tomorrow. So nonessential retail previously could open with a 10-person limit. Beginning tomorrow, they'll be able to open with 50% of their capacity. Presently, restaurants and restaurants may only open for takeout and delivery. And beginning tomorrow, they'll be able to expand to utilize up to 50% of their outdoor capacity. Entertainment and amusement businesses have been closed, and they must remain closed. Fitness and exercise facilities have been closed, and their indoor facilities must remain closed, but they may conduct outdoor classes. Places of worship previously had a 10-person limit. They may open utilizing 50% of their indoor capacity. Personal grooming establishments presently closed will be able to open for appointments only, observing social distancing requirements and the use of face coverings. Childcare was, has been open previously and may continue to operate. Childcare was, has been open previously and may continue to operate. Gatherings, public and private, are currently subject to a 10-person limit, and they will remain subject to a 10-person limit. And both teleworking and face coverings, which have been strongly encouraged, will continue to be strongly encouraged. And then, and these, this is in your materials, this slide here is a very nice summary of everything that I've just reviewed with you, that has the two columns and the current status and the status as of tomorrow. So to facilitate the implementation of phase one and subsequent phases here in the city, a couple of weeks ago, I formed a stabilization and recovery team. The team is divided into four working groups. There is a business recovery and outreach working group chaired by tourism director Cheryl Wagner, a facilities, programs, and services working group chaired by parks and recreation director Chris Tuttle, an employees working group chaired by chief human resources officer John Ben, and a communications working group chaired by Lee Catlin, who has been helping us with our communications effort all during this crisis. Each working group is presently digesting the state guidance concerning phase one and considering mandated and best practices, and they will be developing recommendations. Examples of their current efforts include, for the business recovery and outreach working group, a meeting yesterday with key stakeholders in the city's commercial sector to solicit their input about measures the city might implement to support that sector. The facilities, programs, and services working group is reviewing the extensive list of suspensions and closures implemented by the city previously to determine where, when, and how we can restore those programs and services and reopen facilities. The group will also consider future programs such as Camp Stanton and seasonal facilities, including swimming pools at Montgomery Hall Park and Gypsy Hall, Gypsy Hill Park. The employees working group is considering what personal protective equipment might be recommended or required for both employees and visitors to city facilities. The group is also considering other measures in the workplace, such as cleaning and disinfection to ensure the safety of employees and visitors. And finally, the communications working group is working on updates to the COVID-19 landing page to focus more on recovery efforts and the phased reopening, pulling together relevant resources in a single place. So all of these, these four groups are out, have been out doing their work, engaging with relevant constituencies, gathering information, reviewing the guidance from the governor's office with more guidance yet to come concerning certain specific subjects. And we will come together then as the full team and develop a plan to complement the governor's, keeping in mind that we do so in an, in an extremely challenging environment. And our next meeting is tomorrow morning, and coming out of that meeting, we may have a first round of decisions. So in closing, let me say that I appreciate the challenges that are faced by our residents and businesses in these unprecedented times. I assure council and the public that we are working as diligently and promptly as possible on these difficult issues. I'd be pleased to take your questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call out the list because I assume that there'll be some questions at this point. So let's start with Mr. Holmes. Do you have any questions?
Yes, this is Terry Holmes. Steve, will we be required to keep a log of like, as far as businesses go, people who come and go from our establishments?
Mr. Holmes, I'm happy to share with you the guidance that's been issued by the state, but I have not, in my review of that guidance, seen any requirement along those lines.
Yeah, I was just, I was just thinking that it might be, you know, if you have somebody that gets infected, it might be a, a good thing to have. At least you may be able to trace back.
My understanding is that the state is in the process of assembling a contract, a contact tracing program. And perhaps, once that is up and running, there may be some further requirements, but again, nothing that I've seen in the materials that have been issued to date establishes a requirement along those lines.
Any other questions, Mr. Holmes?
No, none at this moment.
All right, thanks. Dr. Harrington?
Yes, thank you. Steve, could you just go over the list of the, the names of the working groups, the subcommittees?
Certainly, Dr. Harrington. They include a business recovery and outreach group, a facilities, programs, and services group. And let me back up, the business recovery and outreach group is really an outward-facing working group that is really oriented towards the business and nonprofit sectors to attempt to take, take stock of how they may be affected by the phased reopening and what measures the city might consider and might take to assist them with their efforts to reopen and to facilitate that reopening. The facilities, programs, and services working group, which is the second group, is really looking inwardly at the city facilities that we have closed and the city programs and services that we have suspended. So obvious examples of facilities are City Hall, the Parks and Rec admin building, the visitor center, the library, and programs and services, you know, would have included before and after-school daycare, services at the library that have been suspended due to the closure of the facility. And there's a good example where just because the facility reopens, this will not necessarily mean that the services provided in the facility will resume at the same time. There may be a staggering, so that there's a difference between how we treat the facility and how we treat the services that are offered in the facility. The facility, facilities, programs, and services is that internal look at the long list of closures and suspensions that we affected since the local emergency was declared. And also looking forward at programs and services that would typically be conducted during the summer months, like Camp Stanton, like the swimming pools, like concert series in Gypsy Hill Park, to attempt to make some decisions or provide some guidance about those programs and services as well. The third group is the employees working group. And again, their focus is going to be on, you know, what we need to do to make the facilities safe, not only for the employees, but also for the public when we reopen those facilities. And then the communications working group is obviously going to be engaged in helping us with our messaging to communicate the, the decisions that are made by the entire team on the basis of the input from the other working groups.
Thank you. I just have a comment and then one other question, Mayor Dol. The comment is that I, that's the structure that you've created to start handling this process strikes me as a, maybe ingenious is too strong a word, but a really smart and forward-thinking way to organize for this transition and get ready for it and ask the right questions and, and get yourself in contact with people that have the right answers to those questions. So I'm very proud of that and I appreciate that very much. I did have a question about the first of those sub, sub-working groups, the one related to business and commercial activity. Did I understand you to say that that group had already had some conversations with representatives from the commercial community?
That's correct. Yesterday, there was a Zoom session led by Cheryl Wagner that included, I think about a dozen individuals from the business community from across the city. And it really was a listening session on the part of our working group. You know, Billy Vaughn is on that working group as well, and a few other city representatives. I think the group has a total of five individuals. So they participated and there were perhaps a dozen representatives of the business community. And as I, as I've said, it was very much a listening session. And we will get a report out from the, from that working group tomorrow when we have the larger team meeting.
This may be a premature question because I'm sure you have not had an opportunity yet to compile those discussions. But can you, is it possible for you to give us just a flavor of one or two or three of the issues that that group is working on and thinking about and trying to craft solutions for?
I think that the, well, the, the, the most prominent issue that is front and center is whether and how we might provide some additional outdoor seating for dining establishments in the city. And we are waiting for some supplemental guidance that is coming from the state on that precise issue. During the governor's briefing last Friday, he specifically indicated that dining establishments with existing outdoor dining areas could operate in those areas. So there has been some question in the days since whether that was an intentional limitation. And I think there are multiple state agencies that are working furiously to provide clarification and guidance on that specific issue. The latest information that I have is an indication that it will not be quite as limited as the governor articulated, which then introduces for us, I think, a series of complicated decisions about how, if at all, we, we provide outdoor dining space in areas in the city. And, you know, we, I don't want to take you down that rabbit hole. You know, we want to do everything that we can to, to help all of the businesses downtown. I will just say to you that it is not, it is not a simple issue to address.
Yeah, I wouldn't imagine. Sidewalk access and traffic safety issues and all the rest of it. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Oaks.
No questions.
All right, thanks. Ms. Mead.
Steve, I was just wondering if you had begun a process of reaching out to employees who have been terminated. I know you had talked about the assumption that we would be bringing folks back as we, as we began to be able to deliver services that they were associated with. Are you listening or hearing any concerns about the risks to coming back to work again? And, and you feel, are you getting a feel for how many of those employees might be interested or maybe not interested in coming back to work?
Well, let me first say that if and when we bring back any of those employee, any of the 64 employees who I think you're referring to, it's, it will not be all at once. Because we won't flip a switch, if you will, and restore ourselves to our status prior to the local emergency.
Yeah, I understand that.
And in fact, let me say that during phase one, I do not anticipate a change in the current operations of the city workforce. So, you know, the governor has strongly encouraged continued teleworking where that is an option. And I have, I hope any of you will tell me otherwise, but one thing I have not heard are any complaints about the inaccessibility of city staff. So, you know, I think that we continue to function effectively and productively with some portion of the workforce working from home. And so during phase one, and, and we'll have to consider phase two, during which the governor has also said he encourages continued teleworking. I expect that we'll continue to do what we're doing in the locations where we're doing it. That's all a very long way of coming back to your specific question. I have not heard yet any expressions of concern about coming back to the workplace. You know, I can tell you that among the measures being taken are the installation of dividers at public counter spaces in City Hall. You know, for example, at the treasurer's office, at the commissioner of the revenues office, at the community development counter on the third floor, at the counter in the reception area, in the city manager's office, and in the tourism and economic development office, I believe at the library. So, you know, that, that's one example of a measure I know that is being implemented. And there will be others that I am sure are recommended by the employees working group that we will put into place before we, before we bring employees back into these facilities.
Thank you. I have another question. I really, as Jim Harrington said a minute ago, I think that getting input from businesses is a terrific strategy. Are any of the other working groups seeking input from citizens? You know, you mentioned a few minutes ago wanting to know whether folks are, whether we're hearing folks talk about inaccessibility of city services and that sort of thing. So for instance, in the development, or in the, in, in the community development area, potentially reaching out to a small subset of folks who are frequent users of that service to see if they're feeling that they're, they're, they've seen deterioration in service.
If we're not doing that, we certainly can do it. And I will have a conversation with Mr. Vaughn about taking such a step.
Thanks.
All right, Dr. Curran.
Thank you, Mayor Dol. Steve, I do have one question. I suppose it would be covered by the employee working group. If City Hall reopens and if some public services also reopen behind glass, obviously, the employees who, who interact with the public will have to come back to City Hall. But what about the employees who don't interact with, with the public? Will they still be able to work from home?
As I said, you know, especially during phase one, you know, I think everyone who is working at home will continue to work at home. And, you know, we will, I see this very much, you know, we didn't arrive where we are today very suddenly. very much, you know, we didn't arrive where we are today very suddenly. There was an incremental path that we took to find ourselves in a situation where the city buildings are closed and we're providing services remotely, and some programs and services have been suspended. And so as we reverse course, I can envision a similarly gradual path back to full service. So perhaps at some point during Phase Two, city employees would come back to the closed city facilities. And as they did on the other side of this curve, they will be in the building, but the building may still be closed to the public. And then eventually, during, during Phase Two, or perhaps when we get to Phase Three, all taking into account guidance from public health officials, we'll get to a point where we reopen the city facilities to the public. Is it possible that even after that has occurred, some employees may continue to work from home? I would say yes. And, you know, there, and I think that those will be handled on a case-by-case basis. And, you know, I can see using that as a vehicle to address specific concerns by, or specific concerns held by particular employees. So if, for example, we had an employee who had an underlying health condition so that they were at significantly additional risk, yet they could perform their work remotely as they have been, perhaps that employee would be continued, would be permitted to continue to work from home. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And I'd just like to join Dr. Harrington in praising the city's approach with the four working groups, the issues that you're tackling, the guidance that you're taking from the state and from public health authorities. It seems very prudent, responsible, and exactly the right way to go.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Vice Mayor Kyer.
Yes. Steve, two questions. One from the business and commercial end of it. And I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So I assume that as we open up or the guidelines that the committee comes up with, they're going to reach out to every business excluding just Zoom or whatever, to SDDA and each business individually, to let them know the guidelines or procedures so that they'll be operating properly. And I'm sure the answer is yes to that, but.
Greg Bean, the executive director of SDDA, is on the Business Recovery Outreach Working Group and is taking a prominent position in engagement and communications with the, you know, the constituency that SDDA serves. And of course, that constituent, so that constituency is only a subset of our business community in the entire city. And that's where the Communications Working Group will add value by ensuring that our messaging is cast as widely as possible throughout the city.
Okay. And the other on, from Parks and Recreation, and I believe I heard you mention that possibly playgrounds and possibly even the pool through some kind of guidelines or regulations may open. I guess that's going to be pretty stringent or how do you monitor 200 people showing up to swim?
Yeah. So I don't want to create, I want to be very tempered in the expectations about the pools in particular. Presently, Camp Stanton and the pools at both parks are scheduled to open as of July 1. But we're not certain that that will occur. And that is, those two issues are among the highest priorities because, as you can appreciate, a lot of families rely on Camp Stanton for summer childcare. The pool, the pools in particular, the guidance from the CDC is, is clear that, you know, there's nothing inherently problematic about swimming pools. There's been no evidence that the disease is spread in, in swimming pools. During Phase One, outdoor pools may be used for lap swimming only, and only one person per lane. And of course, the, what I didn't cover with you, with reviewing the governor's slides, was the duration of each of these phases. Phase One is anticipated to last two weeks up to a month, two to four weeks. Phase Two is anticipated to last also two to four weeks. So let's assume for the moment that each phase lasts a full four weeks. So eight weeks from May 15 takes us to July 15. And the pools are staffed by summer employees who, around the middle of July, given our schedules here in the school world, are beginning to look at winding things down. So, you know, do we incur the costs, the beginning of season costs to open the pools and to go through the hiring process in what we think will be a difficult environment to recruit employees for what would likely be a season of very limited duration? And our neighbors all around have already made the decision not to open their pools. And we had been waiting until we received this first set of guidelines. And again, you know, just to illustrate Phase One, lap swimming only, one person per lane. I'm not sure that Phase Two is really going to be any more permissive. You know, perhaps it will allow lap swimming, two people per lane. And so anyway, we, those are, you know, issues that we will be looking at very quickly.
Okay, thank you. And as everybody else has said, I do really appreciate the work. I know this is not easy by any means. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I had a couple of questions. One is, when they talk about 50% capacity, is capacity as per like the fire marshals?
So for the retail, for nonessential retail, the 50% is actually based on an occupancy load that is in the certificate of occupancy issued by the city. My understanding is that outdoor dining areas do not have that sort of a designation. So the guidance that I expect to be coming from the Virginia Department of Health will encourage consultation with, with the local government. And I think that that's a responsibility that we would then delegate likely to Perry Weller. Fire Department.
Yeah, because I thought without having some defined, or some definition of capacity, it could go all over the place. And then my, the other thing is just to comment. And I know that a lot of people are eager, eager to see certain things opening up or certain ideas come to fruition. But I appreciate the fact that you've got these committees working on things because oftentimes what seems like a great idea has unintended consequences that can, something that might help one business could hurt another one. So I think it's a good thing to have these committees working on some of the issues that we'll be having over the next, the next season, I think. But thanks for all the hard work. I bet you had no idea that this was going to be in, in your job description. So are there any other questions or comments? You can speak up. I can't see everybody. And if there's no, no more questions or comments, then we're on break until the beginning of the regular meeting. Good evening. As mayor, I call this electronic communications meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being convened with city council members using the Zoom platform, broadcast over the city's cable channel, and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. At this time, I would ask the clerk of council, Ms. Simmons, to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting. Mayor Doll.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Here.
Ms. Oaks.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Dr. Harrington.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
I'm here.
Dr. Curran.
Here.
I've confirmed that all council members are present. Thank you. I ask that city manager Steven Rosenberg now identify his location and those city officials or colleagues, if any, present with him at that location, and the participation of anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, I am participating from my residence in Stanton. There is, there is no one here with me at this location. Other city representatives participating on the Zoom platform include Assistant City Manager Leslie Beauregard, City Attorney Doug Gwynne, Chief Finance Officer Phil Traer, and Clerk of Council Faith Simmons. Also joining us on the Zoom platform this evening are two representatives of Augusta Health, Sandra Buckland and Michael Day.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of the electronic communications nature of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of city council. This meeting has also been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page. Access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During matters from the public on council's agenda toward the end of the meeting, public comments will be taken. Members of the public who wish to participate in matters from the public at the appropriate time may call 844-854-2222. And when prompted, enter the access code 619358 with the pound sign. Callers will be recognized in order. The public is reminded that matters from the public is a time for council simply to listen to your comments. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Detailed instructions for public participation have been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page, and can be found now on the agenda for this meeting and on council's website at www.ci.stanton.vaa.us/government/city-council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting is being conducted by Zoom, given the catastrophic, catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which as part of the total circumstances makes it impracticable or unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with City Council ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.vaa.us/cogord2020-04. Given that we are conducting this meeting by Zoom, with the meeting being livestreamed on the city's website and broadcast over the cable system as it occurs, I believe it merits reminder of a few special requests as we undertake this meeting in this unique format. First, I emphasize the request that each speaker speak loudly and slowly and self-identify each and every time when speaking, so that it will be clear who is speaking before your remarks are made. Second, please pause after each speaker to allow a brief interval between that speaker and another speaker. Third, if for any reason a participant cannot clearly hear the speaker or must leave the meeting before it is adjourned, please let us know. Fourth, all votes will be taken by roll call and recorded in the minutes. Fifth, I ask that if any member of city council has to leave the meeting for any period of time, to please interject and make an announcement so that the clerk may take note of attendance in the minutes. I ask that you also announce your return so it also may be reflected in the meeting minutes. Finally, I ask everyone's patience, because without being in the same room, it is likely that a speaker may not realize that another speaker is continuing. Again, we may unintentionally step on each other's words, so it's fine if we need to have the speaker repeat or clarify. We'll take whatever time is necessary so that everyone is clear about what is being said and by whom. I will now take questions from council members and participants if you have any questions about the process. Council members, do you have any questions about that process?
No.
No.
All right, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd ask everyone to stand and repeat in unison for those who are willing and able. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next is the mayor's report. And under this report, we do have a proclamation for Mental Health Month, May 2020. And I'll read it at this time. Whereas mental health is part of overall health, and whereas mental health sustains individual's thought processes, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change. And whereas one in five adults experience a mental illness, and one in 25 adults live with a serious mental illness. And whereas roughly one in five youth ages 13 to 18 live with a mental health condition, have developed the condition by age 14. And whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery. And whereas it is important to maintain mental health and to recognize the symptoms of mental illness and seek help when it is needed. And whereas every citizen and community can help in the silence and stigma surrounding mental illness. And whereas through public education and civic activities, Virginia remains engaged in the promise to address the challenges facing people with mental illness. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month is an opportunity to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote the identification and treatment of mental illness. Now therefore, and treatment of mental illness. Now therefore, I Carolyn W. Doll, Mayor of the City of Stanton, on behalf of the Council of the City of Stan, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Mental Health Month in the City of Stanton and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services, adopted this 14th day of May 2020. And this is virtually presented to our representatives from Augusta, Augusta Health, and I would, at this time, welcome both of you or one of you to, if you have a few words you'd like to say.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. My name is Sandy Buckland. I'm a registered nurse at Augusta Health. I had a few words to say. I wanted to thank you and the council members. I wanted to thank Assistant Manager Beauregard for all of your actions to proclaim this May 2020 Mental Health Day in Stanton, Virginia. I reached out. I was inspired to reach out to you, especially during this COVID pandemic in our community, and I am a board certified psychiatric mental health nurse. That's what I do, and I've worked in our community the last eight years serving that population. Currently have a wonderful situation working at Augusta Health as the first specialized nurse in the ED department for mental and behavioral issues. And with mental illness facing so much stigma and continued challenges over having an overburdened system, I just wanted to raise awareness as I'm continually inspired by my patients as they, you know, fight the, the stigma and the illness of mental illness. One in five adults per the CDC do have a mental illness during the course of any given year. So it's important to recognize that these are our loved ones, our friends, our neighbors, and ourselves. So I thank you again. And I, here in the emergency room, would like to hand it over to Michael Day. He is the Director of Behavioral Health here at Augusta Health.
All right. Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks, Sandy. I appreciate what you said about Mental Health Month. As the Director for Crossroads and Augusta Health Behavioral, I'd just like to remind, remind you of some of the program that we offer. First of all, it starts in the emergency department. Patients can come in and ask for an assessment. We have counselors who are available to do mental health assessments and then direct patients to the right area. They can refer them either to our inpatient program or one of our many outpatient programs. I was going to mention a couple of those. We have individual therapists who see patients from adolescent all the way through geriatric. We have outpatient therapy groups, which include relapsed prevention groups, chronic pain groups, sleep recovery. We offer Suboxone support there, weight management counseling, and we're working on a lot of new programming. As soon as the pandemic is over, we hope to continue with some of that. Currently, we also are using platforms like you're using tonight to have this meeting so that we can still see our patients. And we are here for the community. We're so glad for the council to recognize this as Mental Health Month as it, as recognized every year in the United States, and we appreciate that. And, and thank you for giving us a platform to speak to this.
Well, thank you for attending our virtual meeting and for helping our citizens who have mental health issues. And particularly during this time, we probably have a, an increase in that in terms of stress and depression and, and things that come from lack of humor, human interaction and job losses and all the things that are, that are happening in our lives right now. But thank you so much for the work you do.
Thank you for the work you do, ma'am. And, and I would just want to encourage every, anyone who needs help to please reach out because there is hope. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting or you can get off and listen, whatever.
I'm probably going to have to get off and listen. I'm a, I have to go take care of my son, but just getting off my, from the hospital. But thank you. I'm a big fan.
Thank you. All right. One other thing I want to mention in the mayor's report, that I had the opportunity to listen to three young men who were campaigning to run for mayor. They were Drew Truitt and T-Mac, and they were dressed elegantly and had wonderful platforms. And I'm looking for them to come back and visit us when we have in-person meetings. And I'm hoping they hear this so that they can put that on their calendar sometime. Next, are there any additional members, members of council, items from anyone? And raise your hand. I'll, I'll look and see. Ms. Me?
Mayor Doll. I, I just want to say, in all of this craziness and of all, all the bad news that we're getting in, in this period of time, I just want to shout out to West End Citizen, Stanton Citizen, Michelle Edwards, who has launched a new business. It's, it's an online business and she works, she works from home, but I just think it takes an incredible amount of courage for someone to, to at this moment in time, launch a new business. And it just shows that, that if there's a true entrepreneurial spirit, that you can't get it, you can't put it down. And the other thing that I'd like, I, I live, as some of you might have heard while this meeting was going on, I lived next to, next to a household of three very active children. And, and while this, while the, the Stanton City Schools aren't our purview, I, I did want to do a special shout out to a first grade teacher, Mrs. Amanda Smith, who's just shown incredible creativity in, in her approach to working with her students. The story I heard the other day from my neighbor is that, is that first, during the school day, she organized an online scavenger hunt for her students. So she would, she would name whatever it was they needed to go hunt for, and the students would scatter through their house and see what they could find and get back to her. And the other thing that she did that I thought was just incredibly sweet was that one evening, it was of course at the end of the day, not during school hours, she read a bedtime story to her class. It's just amazing. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Anyone else?
I was waiting for Mr. Holmes, but Mayor Doll.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Yes, I have a nominations committee report to present. We have three positions to either reappoint or fill. The first is to the Tourism Advisory Board to appoint Ross Williams to a three-year term beginning May 1st, 2020, and expiring April 30th, 2023. To appoint Greg Bean to a three-year term retroactive to January 1st, 2020, and expiring on December 31st, 2023. To the Planning Commission to reappoint Judith, Judith Wagon to a four-year term beginning June 1st, 2020, and expiring May 31st, 2024. And to the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission to reappoint Carolyn Doll to another three-year term beginning June 1st, 2020, and expiring July 31st, 2023. And I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Ms. Simmons, I will be abstaining from this vote. Are there any comments, discussion? If not, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We next have the approval of minutes for the Budget Work Session of April 16th, 2020. And we can do these one at a time. So if there, if anyone's ready to enter, I'll entertain a motion for them.
Mayor Doll.
Ms. Me?
There's Ms. Oaks.
Ms. Oaks?
Mayor Doll, this is Andrea Oaks. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Budget Work Session of April 16th, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor Doll.
Ms. Me?
Yes, I, I just think, as I said earlier, I've, I've been spending some time looking at old city council minute, minutes from the past decade, and it, it just realized how important they were as a record of our community and our council. And so I wanted to point to lines 252 of 250 to 257 of the work session meeting of April 16th. And I'm going to, I'll read it to you because there seems to be a lot of confusion in the community about the timing of work that has been done on the budget. So I'll, I'll quote, "Mr. Rosenberg noted Mr. Traer had reviewed with council a calendar, and the plan was to revise the budget based on what was presented at tonight's meeting. He noted staff would move forward in preparation of a revised budget with an assumption that there would be no increase in the real estate tax. Mr. Rosenberg stated staff would be looking for another $250,000 worth of savings that could be achieved, and that there would be an equal reduction in funds to the school board." So that occurred on April the 16th, and there's been a variety of articles in the newspaper and things coming in the mail that state that that didn't occur until April 23rd. And so I just want to make sure that we're very clear and that everyone is, is clear about the correctness of this information. Thank you.
All right. Are there, is there any other discussion or comments? Then Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the work session and regular meeting of April 23rd, 2020. I would entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor Doll, this is Andrea Oaks. I'd like to make a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of April 23rd, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks. And finally, we have minutes from the Budget Work Session of April 30th, 2020. I would entertain a motion to approve those at this time.
Mayor Doll, this is Councilwoman Andrea Oaks.
Ms. Oaks.
And I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Budget Work Session of April 30th, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item A is consideration of an ordinance to increase water user fee. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Phil Traer, the city's Chief Finance Officer, will present this item as well as items B and C.
All right.
Madam Mayor, members of councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we are here to consider an ordinance to increase the FY21 water use fees by 5% beginning July 1st, 2020. Under this ordinance, residential water fees would increase from $3.68 to $3.86 per 100 cubic feet. The average bi-monthly billing for a family of four with 1,400 cubic feet of consumption would increase $2.52 or $15.12 annually. Bulk water rates will increase from $18.40 for 1,500 gallons to $19.30 for 1,500 gallons. The additional funds will go towards major CIP projects, which are scheduled over the next four years, including the $6.9 million Gardner Springs Pump House Project in FY22 and Phase 1 of the North River Pipeline Replacement Project, $6.5 million in FY24. Both projects are deemed critical for our water infrastructure. This ordinance was introduced on March 26, 2020, and a properly advertised public hearing was held on April 23, 2020, with budget work sections, work sessions on April 9th, April 16th, April 23rd, April 30th, May 7th, and May 14th. And the city manager has recommended approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any last minute? And it would be after many discussions on this, but any other comments or questions about this ordinance? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor Doll.
Dr. Harrington?
I move that council adopt an ordinance amending, restating, and reordaining Section 13.20.020, rates generally of Stanton City Code, to increase the water user fee from $3.68 to $3.86 per 100 cubic feet. Increase the minimum charge each two months by each regular user of the city water from $18.40 to $19.30. Increase the bulk water rate from $9.20 to $10 per 750 gallons, and increase the minimum charge for bulk water purchases during the month of less than 1,500 gallons from $18.40 to $19.30, effective July 1, 2020, as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second Terry Holmes.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor Doll, it's Councilwoman Oaks.
Ms. Oaks?
I would just like to state that I cannot, in good conscience, during a pandemic crisis and economic hardship, vote to increase fees.
All right. Anyone else? With no further discussion, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
No.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer. Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item B is consideration of an ordinance to increase refuse and recycling rates. Mr. Traer?
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be back. Tonight, we, we are also here to consider an ordinance to increase the FY21 refuse rates by 10%. This rate increase follows the path presented to council during the FY2020 budget process and will raise the monthly residential fees from $18.98 to $20.88. This applies to $1.90 per month or $22.80 per year. The raise will primarily go towards retaining the recycling program and scheduled CIP projects, both at the Augusta Regional Landfill and to the city of Stanton. This ordinance was introduced March 26, 2020, and a properly advertised public hearing was held on April 23, 2020, with budget work sessions on April 9th, April 16th, April 23rd, April 30th, May 7th, and May 14th. The city manager has recommended approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Traer? If, if not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor Doll.
Mayor Doll. Mr. Holmes?
I move that council adopt an ordinance amending, restating, and reordaining Section 8.30.110, fees prescribed of Stanton City Code to increase the refuge and recycling fees 10% affected July 1st, 2020, as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor Doll.
Dr. Curran?
Curran.
Curran. I, like the previous item, like Ms. Oaks, I was originally opposed to raising any fees in sympathy with our citizens who are suffering a great deal of financial hardship. And I think the city has done many things to, to work with our citizens on, on the fees and taxes that we charge. And I'm sure that we will continue to be flexible if people are experiencing financial hardship. But the amount of the fee increases in each case are very small per household per month. But when you add up all the money together and you put it into the city budget, it will really help to pay for some necessary improvements that it would be irresponsible to put those improvements off. So I've changed my mind on, on the previous issue and on this, I, I do support the fee increases now.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor Doll?
Mayor Doll? Andrea?
Ms. Ms. Oaks?
I cannot, in good conscience during a pandemic crisis and economic hardship, vote to increase fees.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Mead?
Mayor Doll?
Mayor Doll, I just wanted to note that in, in 2011, city council voted to increase the refuse and recycling fee. It was the first time it had been done since 1994. And, and as that fee has been, has these increases have been postponed over the years, the, the rate at which we have been able to cover the costs of our environmental fund and depreciation of equipment has, we have made improvements in that, but it was, it was way underwater in, in 2011 when we made that budget decision. We are now trying to gain ground back to make sure that we can accomplish what we need to in order to provide services to our citizens.
All right, thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, and I'm just gonna state that it's, it's like between, you know, it's like between $3 and $4 a month for, for a normal household. So, I mean, it's not like it's extravagant. I'm sure if somebody can't, can't come up with that much money, somebody will loan it to them or give it to them, or there'll be some kind of service that'll, that'll help these people along. But, you know, we need this money to buy, you know, to keep our pipes and stuff running and, and to, you know, hire garbage people to pick our garbage up. We lost the, the use of the people from the jails, so we can't even use that. So, I mean, you know, we need, we need this little bit of money just to keep going.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments? If not, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Oaks?
No.
Mayor Doll?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C is consideration of an ordinance to establish a budget and appropriation for fiscal year 2021, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Mr. Treier?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. One more ordinance. Tonight, we are here to consider the budget ordinance for FY21. FY21's budget ordinance totals $114,290,621, consists of the following: general fund, $56.4 million; debt service, $4.8 million; CIP, zero; Blue Ridge Court Services, $1.1 million; water fund, $5 million; super fund, $5.6 million; parking, $540,000; stormwater fee, fund, excuse me, $1.3 million; environmental fund, $3.3 million; education, $32.5 million; cafeteria fund, $1.5 million; textbook fund, $276,000; school CIP, zero; and school state operated programs of $3 million. There are six sections of this ordinance that I'd like to point out at this time. The recitals A through M, which appear at the beginning of the ordinance, provides background information to citizens to review in order to gain an understanding of what occurred during this year's budget process, the reason for the year-on-year reduction, and why we are partially appropriating, as for, asking for a partial appropriation of our budget. Section 1 of the ordinance quantifies the total budget of $114,290,621 for fiscal year 21, which begins on, on July 1, 2020, and ends on June 30, 2021. Section 2 of the ordinance appropriates 60% of the approved budget. Our budget will remain at $114 million, but our initial appropriation request will equal $68,574,373. This is, this is the amount that we will be able to legally spend at this time. Our plan is to come back before council in late fall after the full economic impact to the virus will have become clear, and council can adjust upwards or downwards the balance of the budget in accordance to the economic conditions. Section 3 establishes a real estate tax rate of 95 cents per $100 of assessed value and establishes the downtown service district tax of 15 cents per $100 of assessed value. Both taxes remain unchanged. Section 4 establishes property tax at $2.90 per $100 of assessed value and business and machinery tax at $1.24 per $100 of assessed value. Both taxes remain unchanged. Finally, in section 9, we're stating that the annual salary for each council member will remain at its current level while providing an avenue to redirect a portion of your salary that is the equivalent of a 10-day furlough or 3.85% of your salary back to the city's general fund. Each member of council requested such a reduction. This avenue allows for that to happen without permanently altering the established salary schedule. This ordinance was introduced on March 26, 2020, and a properly advertised public hearing was held on April 23, 2020, with work sessions held on April 9th, April 16th, April 23rd, April 30th, May 7th, and May 14th. The city manager has recommended approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any question at this point left on the budget? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
I'm just, Phil, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if, if it's my, my end or one. But, but the question I do have is, are we expecting any of the assessments to go up?
Um, I'm, I'm not. That's a complicated question in, in that, given the economic downturn, I, I think we were in, in positive territory three months ago. I don't know where we're at right now, Mr. Holmes. I apologize.
Oh, no, that's, I just was curious. That's it.
I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move to adopt an ordinance establishing and approving a budget for the city of Stanton for fiscal year 2021 totaling $114,290,621 and an appropriation of 60% of the approved budget or $68,574,373, including an appropriation of a general fund transfer to the education fund totaling $7,226,646, and fixing other tax rates and fees as proposed, advertised, and considered for public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor Doll, this is Brenda Mead.
Ms. Mead?
I'd just like to point out that this budget, while, while the, the numbers are large, represents for the past 10 years, an annual growth rate of less than 2.5% of the city's budget. And I'm very proud, although, you know, not, not, not proud or, or not happy at all with the circumstances we find ourselves in. I think this city council, this city has done an excellent job of maintaining a budget that is reasonable and rational and accomplishes what we need to.
All right, thank you. Any other? Dr. Curran?
Mayor Doll, I'd just like to second what Councilwoman Mead said. The Consumer Price Index is about the same, about 2.5% a year on average. So the Stanton budget has really just kept up with inflation, while many cities' budgets, in fact, have exceeded the rate of inflation, in some cases by a great deal. So I think Stanton should be applauded for its fiscal responsibility.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor Doll?
Vice Mayor Kyer?
I would also like to add that, I will say, with this budget, from conception, it troubles me that we have had to take away pay increases that we were feeling really good about doing for city staff and school staff to make this work so that we wouldn't increase real estate taxes. So I do feel a discomfort in the fact that some people aren't getting the raises that they needed because we're trying to manage and hold a certain level of revenue coming into the city for the benefit of everybody, not a specific small group. So it also, as Ms. Mead said, makes me proud that we've been able to come up with such a budget. And again, I want to, my head is off to Mr. Treier, Mrs. Beauregard, Mr. Rosenberg, and our entire city staff for putting this together. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Mayor Doll, it's Councilwoman Andrea Oaks.
Ms. Oaks?
I cannot, in good conscience during a pandemic crisis and economic hardship, vote for a budget that includes fee increases.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? I would just like to, to say that I think the, that all of the staff have done a really excellent job in creating a budget that's, that's usable and doable, even in the face of the, the crisis that we're facing. I applaud them, and I'm glad I'm retired, so I didn't have to do a budget under these circumstances myself. So with that, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Doll?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item D is consideration of an ordinance repealing Chapter 5.15 Health Clubs and Massage Therapy Tattoo Parlors of Title V Business Licenses and Regulations of the Stanton City Code. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask Doug Gwynne, the city attorney, to present this item.
Yeah, proceed. Thank you.
You may.
Madam Mayor, members of council, a matter before you involves a recommendation by me, a city attorney, that council actually repeal what amounts to 40 sections of the Stanton City Code. In this particular instance, particularly when questions get prompted, we learn sometimes that our city code provisions can be duplicative or overlapping with already existing state regulation of various matters. So in this particular instance, we had an opportunity to look at our city code as it related to the regulation of health clubs, massage therapy, and tattoo parlors, and concluded that the state already sufficiently regulates all of those particular subjects. And my recommendation is that council consider and actually adopt this ordinance, which will repeal this chapter of the city code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gwynne. Does anyone have any questions about this? This is something I would call a, a housekeeping kind of thing, so that we're keeping our ordinances trimmed and, and not duplicative. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor Doll?
Dr. Harrington?
I move that upon recommendation of the city attorney, city council adopt the proposed ordinance that repeals Chapter 5.15 Health Clubs and Massage Therapy Tattoo Parlors of Title V Business Licenses and Regulations of the Stanton City Code.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Mayor Doll?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have matters from the city manager. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two items to share with council this evening. Before I do so, the, the next item on the agenda is matters from the public. And while I'm making my brief remarks during matters from the city manager, it would be an appropriate time for members of the public who are interested in addressing council to call and be placed in the queue to do so. And again, the instructions to do so are on the agenda for this evening's meeting, and I'll, right now, give the phone number and the access code twice, so that if members of the public who are interested care to write this information down, and during my presentation during matters from the city manager, they can go ahead and call in. The number is 844-854-2222. When prompted, you enter the access code 619-358-pound. Again, the number is 844-854-2222, and the access code is 619-358-pound. And you'll be placed in the queue. You'll hear the word muted. At that point, you're in the queue. You'll hear the audio feed of the meeting. And when you hear the, the word unmuted, it will be your turn to address council. So let me just, as matters from the city manager, first join members of council in expressing my own thanks and appreciation to Ms. Beauregard, Mr. Treier, and all of the members of the management team and city employees who did the difficult work of revising the proposed budget in an extremely condensed period of time. It's not an overstatement to say that everyone contributed, and I am most appreciative for those efforts. Secondly, during the work session earlier this evening, I briefed council on the State's Forward Virginia reopening plan and the first phase of that plan, and shared with council members our own team approach here with the city. We can expect some announcements in the days ahead concerning city facilities, programs, and services. One preview that I'd like to share with council members and the public is the anticipated change in the farmer's market format. That format will remain unchanged this coming Saturday. So the market this coming Saturday will continue in its current format of preorder and pickup only, buy vehicle at the Wharf parking lot. But I'm in discussions now with the market manager, and I anticipate that that change, that a change will be made consistent with guidelines out of the governor's office concerning the conduct of farmer's markets. And I've been working with the market manager and other city staff to take the steps necessary to return the market to the, yet a modified version of, of what we're all accustomed to. So it will include social distancing, a, a different setup of vendors to provide adequate spacing between them. But it will, it will be a return to something that's more recognizable for those who have patronized the market over the years. So I expect we'll have some formal announcements coming out of the, the market committee and coming out of the market committee and the city in the coming days. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I guess now, at this time, we're ready for matters from the public. If we have anyone in the queue.
My name is Mark Robertson, and I live at 239 Thorn Rose Avenue in Stanton. First of all, I want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak directly to you. I want to use this time to speak in opposition to council raising fees on water and refuse collection and recycling. We are in the middle of a pandemic crisis that we haven't seen the likes of in over 100 years. Many of our citizens have been furloughed, laid off, or worse yet, let go. Businesses are struggling, and many fear if they are even going to be able to open back up. For some, that's a major question. Now is not the time to raise fees during this crisis. I know some of you have said it's only $3 or $3.60 a year. And now tonight, we even hear upwards of $18 a year on another fee. I'm sure for most of you, this isn't a problem. And many of our citizens are blessed, and it won't be a problem for them as well. But you must realize that for many of our citizens, this is just one more nickel-and-dime-us-to-death fee. Many live paycheck to paycheck, and now, some may not even have that paycheck due to Code 19. As a pharmacist for 34 years in this community, I have seen it on a daily basis. I have got patients and customers that come in and get prescriptions for $1.25, $1.50. And sometimes, they can't even afford that because they're more worried about putting a roof over their head or food on their table. So all I want to say is that we must not always go to our standard answer. Let's raise taxes, or let's raise fees. Because you know as well as I do, those fees will never, ever get lowered. You need to be great stewards of the citizens' money. Look at any and all means to cut spending. Cut duplicative services. Do everything possible to save money before you go to the citizens and say, "I need more." Thank you for listening, and if you want a change from the status quo, vote Robertson on Tuesday, May 19. Thank you.
All right, do we have another?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
This is Ballen Jennings, 332 Sherman Street. I am calling in regards to the conduct of council meetings. What her letter to the restroom, April 29th, which she offended, attacked one of the ringers council members, and this was uncalled for. I've been going to council meetings for 45 years. I've never seen any council person yet have this type of conduct. She called an elderly lady an idiot. She, I took it she was looking on the golf course, and she wrote me a nasty letter back, basically attacking Councilwoman Andrea Oakes. And Andrea Oakes has contributed a lot to this city, has given a lot, done a lot for Cherokee. And so this woman is definitely a disgrace to this council and this city. Her conduct is unacceptable, and as far as I'm concerned, she should resign from council. Thank you.
All right, the next caller? Do we have another caller? Is there another caller?
Steve Claffey. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Steve Claffey at 1618 Dogwood Road, and I would like to reiterate my comments that I originally made at the April night matters from the public for our urge council to publish minutes for city council meetings on a more timely basis. Tonight, we heard approval of minutes from 4:16, 4:23, 4:30. The public needs to know what you all are doing on a more timely fashion. Please consider a new way of disseminating minute information to the public, since we can no longer attend meetings and struggle to hear all the proceedings. I refer here to Terry Holmes' comments about Phil Treier tonight. He is extraordinarily difficult. I know he covers a lot of information, but it is difficult on our end to hear it all. That's point number one. Point number two, I am as distressed as everyone that the coronavirus has stopped Stanton in its tracks. No one was capable of predicting how devastating this pandemic would become, considering none of us had ever heard of COVID-19 a year ago. But at the same time, I wish to point out a disturbing trend in Stanton's government. Stanton has adopted a taxing spend philosophy for the past seven years. The original proposed budget presented by Mr. Rosenberg in March included a 2% real estate tax increase. This is what we saw. I believe it takes an epic-sized disaster such as coronavirus pandemic to get this council to not raise our real estate taxes. Furthermore, discussion tonight about the water fee increase never mentioned the fact that this council voted a similar fee increase this very time last year. I believe a 5% increase came about in 2020. 5% more is proposed for 2021. When are we going to see the Gardner Springs project completed? Or even started? Stanton's citizens have done their part. They've paid for it. And finally, city elections are May 19, this Tuesday. I heard all to do their civic duty and get out and vote. Thank you for your time this evening.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, you can be heard.
Thank you. This is Amy Darby at 1824 De Spring Hill Road. And I just want to say that the fact that this council, except for Councilwoman Oakes, voted to increase fees to our citizens tonight during a pandemic crisis when people have lost jobs and their income is limited, is terrible leadership. Grocery prices are on the rise as we speak. And so when you think that $3 is not that impactful, remember that the next time that you were standing in a checkout line. Think about your neighbors. Think about the person in front of you and behind you. It might be important to them. I have spent over the last 25 years working with youth and family, and I know that $3 is a lot of money to some folks. So I think you've probably heard the expression, "Lack of planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on my part." I know that our water infrastructure system is in need of repair. It's almost 100 years old, and we have to provide our citizens good, clean, safe water. But my question is, this is not something that happened overnight. Why hasn't there been planning done and money put aside and put back so that this could happen? I do not believe other localities neighboring us are raising fees on people during this crisis. So Stanton needs to rethink the leadership and the necessity of raising fees on people at this time. Please go and vote on Tuesday, May 19. Thank you.
All right, do we have another caller? Is there another caller? Do we have a caller?
Mayor Dell, we've got a caller on the line, and they've been unmuted, but they're not speaking. I'd invite the caller to identify themselves if they can hear me.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Mayor Dell, we've got a caller on the line, and they've been unmuted, but they're not speaking.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Richard Bolstein. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Richard Bolstein. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
My name is Richard Bolstein. I live at 113 Oak Terrace. Hello? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Richard Bolstein. I live at 113 Oak Terrace. Yes, first of all, first of all, I wanted to, I wanted to...
Mr. Bolstein, this is Mr. Rosenberg. Can I suggest that you turn off your audio feed of the meeting?
I wanted to thank you for taking a pay cut from your already modest salary. Ah, is that better?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, it is.
This is not working very well. Is that better?
Yes, that's fine.
We wanted you to turn the audio off. You lost the whole thing.
Hello? So mute, mute.
We can hear you, Mr. Bolstein.
Okay. Thank you. I think we got this working now. I want to thank you first for taking a pay cut for your, giving your already modest salary, number one. Number two, I do sympathize with the fact that it's difficult during a pandemic to raise fees. However, it would be catastrophic if during a pandemic we had a disruption in our water supply, our sewer supply, or our trash and recycling pickup. So I think, frankly, I think the three callers and Ms. Oakes are just really exaggerating the effect of a $3 monthly increase on a family of four in the city of Stanton. You have already told citizens that you would not cut off their water supply with a late payment. You would not charge late fees, and you would schedule, spread out the payments as necessary. And I think that if it really became a problem that citizens in Stanton who could afford it would step up to start a fund to help those people that are having difficulty paying, I certainly would myself, and I would help start a fund if need be. That's number one. Number two, I'm really outraged by the fact that this has turned into a political discussion here with the four candidates criticizing the current council for the excellent job that they have done since I've been here in Stanton. And you are fiercely responsible. You do try to keep the rates down, the tax rates down, the fees down as much as possible, and still maintain the services that are essential in this city. I am really angry at the candidates who have spoken tonight, Mr. Claffey, Robertson, and Darby, who have spoken about raising the real estate tax when in fact, the council never got to discuss the real estate tax that was proposed by the city manager well before coronavirus took place, and it would have to be a discussion, and never did I hear any incumbent city council person say that they were going to raise the real estate tax rates. So I think that is really unethical political campaigning by Mr. Claffey, Mr. Robertson, Ms. Darby, and Ms. Oakes. And frankly, I did not want to criticize anyone on this call. I had no intention of talking about a, quote, "city council election" on this call, but since the other people raised it, I have to say that I'm very disgusted that a person who I respected two years ago, Ms. Oakes, has now basically endorsed and has not disavowed the lie that has come out about the city council tax rates, about the Second Amendment resolution, which she herself told me she had not made a decision on. And I believe that her, I just think that she is making an outrageous appeal to get votes from those who are on that Second Amendment resolution, who are for that, when she herself told me personally that she was undecided. So I wish I hadn't come for this tonight. I really do. Frankly, I guess that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, it appears that there are no other callers.
All right. Well, with no more callers and no further business, this meeting is adjourned.